That was good to get the extra rest, so. It's amazing how much of my email I get.
I can imagine. Nothing else going on.
Some, I'm learning it's like, sometimes you see to close your door. Yeah, you know. All day Friday, it seems like it just people commit, you know. It's like, hey, get nothing in common. Oh, I did, but not what I wanted to get accomplished.
Yeah, that's the thing. Not what was on my to-do list.
Yep.
Oh, man.
Did you say you have a meeting of yours?
Yes, and we have a, this is not on, from the 17th.
They canceled the.
No, the regular business meeting is not here.
Oh, it's missing.
So these are the 17th, these are the only two things we have here.
May I have a link?
Yeah, well, it's not in the spot, there's somewhere it's not in the spot.
Normal location?
Yes. Today, it's, I'm technically out, but I came up to do this. I'm working with Spirit Lake Police Department.
Hot off the press.
Calendar. More time. It's showing up on the 18th. On the page calendar?
On the 18th. Did I click the wrong date?
Think maybe you were on the 17th? I had to get the right focal and take my glasses.
There you go, yes.
Good, all right, great, because that's certainly happened before. Okay, we should be good then.
Nothing same steer, I know.
Yeah, I'll send it.
Yes.
And I appreciate that.
All right, it's 9:01 a.m. on November 18th, 2025. Good morning, we called the order of this regular meeting of the Bonner County Board of Commissioners. And with that, do we have someone for the invocation today? Would you like to volunteer? That'd be great, thank you. Please rise for the invocation.
Heavenly Father, we come to you through the blood of your precious Son, Jesus Christ, and we just give you thanks and praise for this beautiful community, the leaders and the individuals. We ask you to guide us in this time, help us to be good stewards, give us wisdom and discernment through the decisions that are made today. We do all for your glory, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Okay, and we adopt an order of agenda.
I have a question on this, Mr. Jay.
Yes, sir.
Um, is it my recollection that number three on the assessors, did we already take care of that or do we still need to formally vote on that?
We needed a resolution, we, we did hold a, a public meeting and discuss it, and we agreed that we should move forward, but we didn't have a resolution prepared at the time.
That's right.
So on that issue, that's within the assessor's ability to do that because it's below the threshold. That's why, at the time, he was given that instruction when we did a special meeting.
But there was the, um, the aspect of moving fund dollars from the contingency, from the statutory reserve, which was the reason for the resolution.
So the wording on this one is con- contract and funding for the porta potty, not a transfer of funds from one account to another? Is, what, which is it that you're requesting?
Well, funding in the form of transferring as directed by the auditor, which assesses the moving funds from the statutory reserve to the DMV budget.
So the.
So the request is to move money from the statutory reserve?
Yeah, so in the memorandum itself, there's the language about moving funds and a resolution associated with it. Clarification. So given that information, is the board comfortable with making a motion to adopt the order of agenda?
Based on the information before us, I move to adopt the order of the agenda as presented.
Second. Do we have any public comment on this agenda item? Or deliberation? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Donkey?
Yes, motion passes. And on to the consent agenda. And with the consent agenda for invoices over $5,000, we do have, for technology, a confidential software renewal contract in the amount of $30,804.48. Someone like to make a motion?
Based on the information for us, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second the motion.
Any public comment on this agenda item? Or deliberation?
None.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Corn?
Yes.
Commissioner Donkey?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes. On to the clerk, item number one.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, everybody.
Before you, I have fiscal year 25 claims batch number seven totaling $877,078.42. Out of that, the big ticket items are $26,000 for software, for technology. Solid Waste has disposal fees in the amount of $436,000 and $103,000 for rural system collection. And airport grant at $64,000, those are the lion's share of the items.
Does the board have any questions?
I have none.
I have none.
Entertained a motion?
Based on the information before us, I move to approve FY '25 Claims Badge Zero Seven totaling $877,078.42.
I hear 25 or 26?
Eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand.
FY.
FY twenty-six?
Yes.
Yes, well, that's 26, it says 25, it should be 26.
So FY twenty-six?
FY twenty-six.
So on the agenda, there's a typo that says 25?
Yes.
Good catch.
So the memorandum is correct, but the agenda is incorrect. All right, now that we've clarified, it's FY twenty-six claims and batch number seven. Do we have any public comment on this agenda item?
The claims batch before you also says 26, uh, the actual listing.
Yeah, I think it was just on the agenda.
Just a typo on the.
It was just the agenda.
Seeing no public comment, do we have any board deliberation?
No deliberation.
I'm sorry, was there a comment? Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Donkey?
Yes?
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Passes?
Um, next I have fiscal year 26 Demand Batch Number Seven totaling $57,384.91, and this is our Regent's Blue Shield bill.
Any board questions?
I don't have any questions.
Entertained a motion?
Based on the information before us, I move to approve payment of the FY '26 Demands in Batch Number Seven totaling $57,384.91.
I second the motion.
Do we have any public comment on this agenda item? I'm sorry?
I could not understand you.
You couldn't understand me? Anne, okay, so it's fifty-seven, it's for our Regent's Blue Shield bill. Sorry. We now have weekly health insurance bills under our contract.
My auditory skills were amazing.
All right. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes, thank you, my clerk. On to the prosecutor's office.
Morning.
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 Sandpoint Contract?
Yes.
So Idaho Code allows prosecutors to, um, have contracts with cities for the prosecution of infractions and misdemeanors. We already handle by code, uh, all the big crimes, felonies, juveniles, mental holds, bunch of other things for the cities. Uh, we need unanimous, um, consent of the, the Board of Commissioners to proceed with the contract. As Commissioner Williams has pointed out in the past, there is no question that this is a deeply discounted rate, uh, to the city, I'm not here to argue that. It would cost them quite a bit more, probably at least two times as much to fund their own city prosecutor position. That being said, it does not increase our manpower needs. So we are able to handle this through the existing manpower that we have, mainly because the court proceedings are all at the same time. So Sandpoint cases, Bonner County cases are all bunched together, so we only, most of the time, we only need one lawyer over there.
Board, do you have any questions?
So I appreciate the fact that it doesn't take any extra time. In my opinion, that still, um, doesn't necessarily, shouldn't necessarily reflect upon the amount of the contract, right?
Yes.
I, I would like to see that changed maybe next year.
Okay.
Personally.
I think it would be good, Commissioner Corn, Commissioner Williams has also said that, so it probably would be good if at least one of you would meet with the mayor and myself at some point during the next fiscal year and the police chief and see if we can come up with a, a number that's more palatable to you.
I would be willing to do that, because I would like to see this number increased, especially when you consider that the city does turn to the county and ask to use code to their favor on things that we have questioned. I think there, we're not having an equitable exchange here. And equally, I want to make sure that, I recognize your saying that it doesn't impact your workload. I want, one of the things I want us to pay attention to is, this fiscal year, your office is pulling back more of the things that we were sending out third party, and that shouldn't, the cities shouldn't impact that because that's different than what we have been doing over the last year. So I think this can be a year of us kind of gauging what that looks like and then coming up with a real number for the city, knowing that your workload is increasing because you're, we have actually increased the rate of pay to attract services to us, but that, that's not really reflected in the contract for the city. They're kind of maintaining a very inexpensive service. They, they don't use it often, um, I understand that, but I think that needs to go up next, a, a good review of that.
I think what Commissioner Williams is saying is she would like to steal more of my criminal prosecutors and move them over to the civil, the civil side.
I would like to steal more of my taxpayer money, what we already paid for and not pay bills out. That's what, that's what I'm saying, so.
I, I agree, that's been a valuable shift, to have more of the caseload be in-house instead of paying third-party attorneys. And I agree that with my fellow Commissioners, I think it's coming near to do maybe a, a caseload analysis to see how much time is realistically going into supporting those types of contracted cases, um, so that we can better understand what the value is to have a reasonable conversation about what the contract value should be.
We have the software now to, to be able to do that, in the past, we didn't, but with CarpeL, I think we could handle that.
Okay, because then I think we could have a realistic conversation based on caseload.
And it's worth stating, this is an increase. Um, there is still a about $10,000 increase on this particular contract, it's just, we want a bigger review when we make the changes, but.
Any additional questions? Oh. Entertained a motion?
Based on the information before us, I move that the board approve the contract First Amendment between Bonner County Prosecutor's Office and the City of Sandpoint for the provisions of municipal prosecutor legal services and authorize the chair to sign the agreement administratively.
Second. Do we have any public comment on this agenda item?
Thank you, because I do agree, Commissioners, that there should be an increase. Please do not just look at.
Please state your name and residency.
Wayne Martin, Bonner County resident, thank you, sir. But don't just consider caseload as your criteria for this, because this year may be a low caseload for them, and in the next two, three years down the road, that caseload may increase. So that is an area to look at, um, when you are making that decision and talking with the city, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fred Arndt, still Bonner County resident, so some people chagrin, I would suspect. However, um, I, I would like to point out that, that the city gets 90% of their traffic violation tickets, and the county gets 10%. So there's a huge discrepancy there, let's see if we can't move some of that money over to us.
Message received.
Is there's an incentive to write even more tickets? Careful where you drive. Any additional public comment on this agenda item? All right, seeing non-board deliberation.
I don't agree with making the speed trap in Sandpoint says filter more money out, just put that on the record, Fred. It's already 15 miles an hour on a lot of this place.
So first, your whole choice.
No real comment.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Motion passes, thank you, Press.
Thank you.
Emergency Management Director Howard's on line.
Morning, question about our. First of all, there's a typo in this memo, so on Wednesday.
Director Howard, I'm sorry, I'm gonna pause you, we're, it's really difficult to hear, could you try to move closer to your microphone, please?
Is that better?
Yes.
So, there's a typo, first of all, on the memo, so on Wednesday, August 13th, 2025, Chairwoman Williams made a verbal declaration of disaster regarding the need for assistance due to dry and excessive weather conditions and high winds that have facilitated wildfires in Bonner County. On August 18th, 2025, the Board of Commissioners approved Resolution 25-51 pursuant to Idaho Code 46-1011 and declared that the local disaster exists in Bonner County, Idaho. The attached resolution is to revoke Resolution 25-51 as there is no longer a threat to life and property in Bonner County regarding wildfire conditions. This has been approved by legal auditing and risk.
So I'll explain this for the record, because people have made comments about declarations of emergency and, and of that sort. So when the board is not in a meeting and something occurs in the county like this for the wildfires, the Emergency Management Director will contact the board, uh, that is, the chairperson, and ask for that declaration so that we can start moving services throughout the county. It doesn't just address the services immediately, it also addresses how funding will come back to the county because of that declaration. And so it's a necessary and required element to declare the emergency so that you can move forward. And then once that emergency is gone, then we do this to pull that, um, declaration back because that threat is gone. So I wanted to give that explanation as to how this comes to be. Assuming everybody knows it doesn't, doesn't work necessarily. So that's how we get a declaration, that's how you get it, it's that we're not here to, and it's not within like the 24-hour to do a full-on meeting, it's that we needed to do it immediately.
Clarification. Any board questions? Entertained a motion?
Based on the information provided, I make a motion to approve Resolution Number to be assigned and to revoke Resolution Number 25-51 as there is no longer a threat to life and property of Bonner County regarding wildfire.
Second motion.
Any public comment on this agenda item? Or deliberation? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Donkey?
Yes.
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 Motion passes, thank you, Director.
Thank you.
On to the Assessor's office.
Good morning, Commissioners, attendees, Dennis Engelhardt Assessor for Bonner County. I have three items for the board today. First one is a renewal of the Selkirk MLS Agreement for Sold Data Information. Bonner County wishes to renew the agreement for Selkirk Multiple Listing Services in which they provide the assessor with sold data information pertaining to real properties sold in Bonner County. This agreement will assist the assessor in performing property assessments and will assist the Board of Commissioners in their board equalization, uh, property tax appeal obligations. There is a, a typo in the memorandum, if the board could scratch Idaho Code Section 9-340D2 and replace it with 74-107, the, uh, Idaho Codes, the first one was appealed and replaced by the second, but essentially the same. However, ID, SDI information must be disclosed to a taxpayer for purposes of appeal. The county or court order, uh, protection order will protect the exempt information during the appeal process. Let's see, this agreement begins December 1 of 2025, ends November 31 of 2027. Current fee structure is $45 per month for the sold data.
What was the current fee structure?
$45 per month for the sold data.
So is there an error in the, the document? Because it says is $0 per month for sold.
Uh, that would be the second, that's a different MLS agreement. That's the next one.
Assessor Engelhardt, I just want to make sure I'm correcting the memo accurately. You said the Idaho Code reference should be 74-107?
Correct.
Thank you. Will that be the same for your second memo as well?
Yeah.
Yes, it would be.
Because I, it's same paragraph in each one.
Does the board have any additional questions? I have none.
I don't have questions on what's being asked, I just know, I, I heard a lot from the community not liking it. They don't get, unless you appeal, you don't get to see what it's being compared to. And there are other counties that actually don't use an MLS system. And so, in a way, the idea that we value your property, but we don't tell you what we did when, unless you go through, what can be seen as a contentious process with the county, you don't get to know how we came up with that number. I understand why the assessor uses this method, but I also hear the community's concerns that they don't get the information until they do an actual appeal. And that, I think there's an, we create a problem by way of the way the mass appraisal system itself, but I just want to make a note that here, the fact that people don't like that you don't get it unless you appeal, so you don't know, and then you don't have access essentially to argue with the county because they don't have access to an MLS system. And so, there's a, a process that has come up that people feel is not equitable, because we say you can only appeal with documents that are not easily accessible, so. I'd like us to look at kind of that in the future, but I understand a lot of people made this comment to me about this, because I think it's Boundary County actually also that doesn't use MLS system, so.
For the, for the board's certification, Boundary County did not use it because they did not and could not get a contract, they do now have a contract.
So I'll give a response, Boundary County's response on how their appraisals go there is that they don't see a negative impact from not having an MLS system. And so my point is the community's concern of, we have access to data that they don't have access to, that we don't release until you appeal. When they appeal and they see what we're comparing to, they don't have a way to argue with the board because they can't bring forward that kind of data. That's, that's the system that we have, which has created, so the process then is that you must, you pay for an actual appraisal of your property, which I, I understand the concern from the public on this, because this is, we have to protect the data that we get from this system. We equally have to follow the rules if we enter into the contract, but that, that, my point is the concern that have been brought forward from people of not having access to it.
So contractually, under what conditions are we, for example, allowed to respond to a PRR request from a member of the public about the, um, the value, MLS values associated with assessment of their parcel?
Contractually, we can't release it outside of a, uh, an appeal or a court hearing. Selkirk is a little more lenient in their contract than others are. We can discuss MLS information for that specific property, but we cannot release MLS information about any other property, what we use for that property. And sometimes, as the board knows, because they've sat in the, uh, BOEs, that we have appellants come in with MLS information that we're not privy to, we don't get. And somehow they, they achieved getting that information, presenting it to the board.
Well, what they, and a lot of times we see is the people will go on to Zillow and they'll say this sold for this, and we don't count that as data that's used for the valuation.
Correct, that's correct.
And I think there's some opportunity for us to look at how the, from the property owner's perspective of the system is, but I, I understand what this is, I just know that's been a point of questions from the community of this process. I just know that's been a point of questions from the community of this process.
So, we can deliberate after we have a motion. If we'd like to do that first, please.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve the license agreement as presented between Bonner County and Selkirk Multiple Listing Service for access to shared data and information.
One second.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Thought you were looking at me for deliberation. And I'm like...
I just wanted to know if I had stepped out a second, so...
I stepped out for a second. I'm good.
We're all on the same page now. We're good. Okay, we have a second on the motion. So, do we have any public comment on this agenda item? Mr. Bowman?
Good morning, Dave Bowman, Bonner County. So, I heard a couple of things here. This has always been, I think, a point of contention with a lot of folks. I thought I heard Commissioner Williams say that the information the assessor's office uses that they garner from the MLS is only available to a person if they file an appeal. And then, I thought I heard Assessor Engelhardt say that it's available if someone files a PRR, which I would think would be the legal answer because while the public doesn't have access to the MLS in general, in a broad sense, any information that is exchanged between a county employee or a county-elected official and an outside entity, unless it's an attorney or it's covered by attorney-client privilege or HIPAA or something like that, is public record. So, it would seem to me that anyone who has an issue with their assessment or even just wants to know how it was calculated should be able to file a PRR and get that information.
I can respond to that. That information is exempt from a public records request. And we have a special form just to respond to those requests, telling the people what the statute is and why it was denied.
So, that... Did you under...
Could I follow up?
Yeah.
So, that's something I left out of my comment or question was that Assessor Engelhardt said that it's... They're prevented in the terms of the contract from providing that information. But then, he just mentioned the statute because that's when the presentation was being given. And it occurred to me that you can't... You can't have a contractual obligation that conflicts with statute or code. So, I wanted to get clarification on that because it just seems like it would be public information.
That's the statute that I mentioned at the beginning, the correction.
So, the Idaho Code 74-107?
Correct.
Is the code that deals with SDI-exempt information?
Correct.
Sounds like it's time to get the real estate lobby out of the statute business.
So, I'll clear... So, and part of what this is, is it's... The sold data information statute is used to say that this information isn't... Is exempt from being released. And so, the only way you get the information is through the appeal per the agreement. And that's why I was bringing forward the concerns. Does that fully kind of address what you're...
It does. That's why I said maybe it's time to get the real estate lobby out of the business of helping to write statutes. But yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Plant? You are currently muted. Okay, Ms. Eisner?
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes.
I just wanted to let everyone know that you should really pay attention to your assessment because mine was extremely high this year. And the only reason I was able to appeal it, actually, is because I'm a real estate agent and have way more access to the multiple listing service the county does. Therefore, I didn't even have to have an appeal because I won just by a conversation. So, I do think there should be a different method. It's really a pain for people that are over-assessed or think they've been assessed unfairly. So, I just encourage everyone to really talk to your neighbors, get some comparables if you know a real estate agent. I'm happy to help you. Thank you.
I might follow up on that. And I agree with her. Our experience is when people come in during inquiry, we dispose of 95-plus percent of all potential appeals just because we're sitting down and have a conversation about the information available and any new information that comes in. So, it's important you talk to your assessor. I mean, you have a right to file an appeal, but part of that process should be coming in and talking to the appraiser.
Yeah, it's great if people can avoid needing to go through the appeal process.
Yes, that's true.
Ms. Martin?
Wayne Martin, Bonner County resident. So, my question is... So, I file an appeal in order to get that information. When I get that information, do I now have to come up with the documents at that time? Or do I get a period of time to be able to look at this, read it, understand it to some degree, to then be able to gather my material to go against what that material has to say?
The assessor wanting to...
Well, we're now getting into the whole appeal process and as opposed to discussing MLS.
And I'm sure you're available at any time you talk to citizens.
Absolutely.
Do we have any additional public comment? Mr. Linska?
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. Yeah, so, you know, Idaho is a non-disclosure state. We're one of the last few in the nation that is a non-disclosure state. This information from both MLSs, I'm a member of both Selkirk and Coeur d'Alene, you know, that's proprietary data. They don't have to enter into an agreement. You know, here's the problem. If we were to go ahead and lobby Boise to go ahead and change us to a disclosure state, every single state that has done that has adopted excise taxes. Now, that means that a... You know, there's going to have to be taxes due every single time a piece of property is sold. And so, there's more than just a couple of reasons why, you know, we should go ahead and acknowledge and abide by the agreements that those two MLSs have come up with. In Selkirk MLS, when you enter a listing, you know, it's assumed that all information is going to be given to the assessor. However, if you have a buyer or a seller that does not want that information released, then they have to simply check that box and it won't be released to the assessor's office. Approximately between 64% and 70% of all listings currently that are sold through Selkirk MLS are reported to the assessor's office. Cooten County, where I should say the Coeur d'Alene MLS, that higher is quite... That number is quite a bit higher. You know, I imagine if this information was subject to a public records request, I imagine you're not going to get anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any additional public comment on this agenda item? All right. See, none, board deliberation.
I completely understand the proprietary data portion. It's the... How do we address the public aspect of their access to being able to take a look at our... How we... The process itself, so...
Yeah, and I agree that it would be beneficial for citizens who have an interest to contact the assessor's office to learn more about what the process looks like, both prior to an appeal and if they were to actually file an appeal. And I think it's incumbent on the board to try and have as much actual market data as possible when we're having to deal with a board of equalization decision because we want to be as fair and reasonable as we can in that decision. So, it's a little bit of a double-edged sword. But... So, I agree with that level of frustration and concern. The other thing I have seen is when it comes to the appeals that have come in when sitting in the board of equalization, I don't know what the percentage was, but it seems like a large number of those who appealed utilized their relationship with their real estate agent to obtain MLS data to present for their side of the appeal. And so, I think there's some ability for the average citizen. There is effort involved with that to work with a real estate agent. But we know that the... We've had a number of citizens utilize that resource. So, maybe there's more of an educational aspect to it. But I think it would be a disadvantage to property owners to not have the additional data to try to be as accurate as we can as a county. But I acknowledge the fact that there are some challenges because it's proprietary-protected data. So, that's a hard balance. But I'd not like the condition of being without the data to make those better decisions.
Speaking to this agenda item, I think it's absolutely necessary. And I just want to make sure that we're not going to get sidetracked here. And what we're being asked for is just to renew the contract.
Yeah, I think it's about the application aspect of it, so...
My comment wasn't being sidetracked. It was the language in what we're reviewing is addressing how people have access to the data. And so, if the public has a question of the board as to... Essentially, this is protected from the public records and we have to address that aspect of it, even with understanding that we need data and there's a desire for a different situation on that regard. But the board may very well have a solid support to enter into the contract. But when we enter in the contract, we equally have to recognize that we're telling the public that they don't get access because this data is going to be protected. That's worth a conversation before we make a vote because we equally have opportunity to say we understand why there's the community concern about what we're doing, but it shows that we're listening and hearing and we're rationalizing why we're going to move forward with the vote in support of something like this, if that's the direction of the board. So...
Any additional deliberation? Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Item two.
Thank you. Before we move on to item two, I'd like to point out to the board that the new agreement does need signatures on page eight and nine. On the board. So, item two is a... An agreement with Coeur d'Alene MLS for sold data information. And it is essentially the same as the Selkirk agreement in terms of the memorandum, with the exception that this agreement begins December 1, 2025, ends December 31, 2077, and current structure fee is $0 per month.
So, is that... Is this MLS choosing to not charge because of the fact that we're accounting a government entity versus...
I don't think that's part of their logic. They just, when asked what they wanted for a fee, they waived their fee for us.
So, then, the purpose for the agreement is essentially to maintain the proprietary data, to have a contract in place.
Correct.
Any additional questions?
No.
Entertaining motion?
Based on the information before us, I move to approve the license agreement as presented between Bonner County and Selkirk Multiple Listing Service, Inc. for access to shared data and information.
I believe there's an error. The CDA MLS agreement, I think that there's a copy and paste of the motion into your second request.
Oh, there is. I'm sorry. That should be...
It'd be... You shouldn't say Selkirk Multiple Listing Service. It should be Coeur d'Alene MLS agreement.
Correct.
So, I didn't second your motion?
That'd be a good reason. So, I will restate the motion. Based on the information before us, I move to approve the license agreement as presented between Bonner County and Coeur d'Alene MLS agreement for access to shared data and information.
I second the motion.
Do we have any public comment on this agenda item? Or deliberation? None?
None.
Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Motion passes. Item number three, please.
Thank you. And again, I'll point out that the Coeur d'Alene MLS requires signatures on page seven. Item three is contracting and funding for a port-a-potty service at the Priest River County Yard for DMV operations. The assessor requests authorization to contract with KG and T Septic, Inc. for services at the Priest County Yard for DMV operations and the allocation of funds from the Statutory Reserve Fund to the assessor's Priest River budget as recommended by the auditor to pay for the contract. Monthly services will be between $185 and $195 for the ADA assessable port-a-potty rental with sanitation and mineralization.
Assessor Engelhardt, could you please clarify? The $10 price differential per month is if it requires mineralization, depending on weather conditions?
Yes, yes. It's $10 more a month during the winter months where... So, it doesn't freeze up.
Thank you.
Does the board want me to read the resolution?
I don't feel the need.
Okay. And I believe it's Resolution 2503. Is that correct? Asia... Alicia? Okay. All right. All right, thanks.
So, might want to make the motion, resolution number to be assigned?
I will add for the board's certification that the transfer would be an approximate sum of $2,200.
Thank you. Does the board have any additional questions?
No.
Entertaining motion?
Based on the information before us, I move to approve Resolution number to be assigned for the contract and funding for our port-a-potty services to the Priest River County Yard DMV and the transfer of funds from Statutory Reserve Line 0112-07860 to the assessor's Priest River DMV Budget Line 012627110 as recommended by the auditor.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this agenda item? Stephanie?
Hi, guys. That's Stephanie Coeter, I heard. I would just... I'm not sure that we absolutely need to do this transfer out of contingency just yet. We can kind of see how DMV's budget goes and then make an adjustment later in the year once we move the money into the assessor's or the... Or motor vehicles. We can't really move it back out.
So, based on if the resolution were to be approved, I don't think there's a specific timeframe to the... When the funds would be moved. So, is it correct that the auditor's office could work with the assessor's office to determine if and when the timing is appropriate?
Yes.
Yeah, because looking at the language of the resolution, I don't think we're time-bound.
No.
Mr. Clerk?
Hi, Mike Rosedale, Bonner County Clerk. I think it's a fantastic thing that the assessor's doing. I think what Jessica's saying is the fact that our contingency funds are silver bullets, so to speak, and we don't want to spend those if we don't have to. The project is worthwhile. It might be good to wait and see as we get close to the end. If they have funds, we can use those. Otherwise, contingencies would be improper.
Jessica, do you have anything additional?
No. No, thank you.
Okay, any other public comment on this agenda item? Or deliberation?
I look at this request and when I look at the assessor's budget, I think that the request to move funds is premature. I think that you don't do a resolution to pend moving in case they need it today when they don't need it. It's if they need it, that's when you want to open contingency. And that's a huge thing for a board to open contingency for transfer, especially if you don't really need it. So, my position is going to be that... So my position is going to be that the, and in part, the documentation that has been reviewed and approved has a comment that says you're being approved by the auditor's office. So when the clerk gives you the comment that says, we don't necessarily need to move it, I am even less encouraged to move money from our contingency fund when it's not necessary. And so there, it's not preventing the project from moving forward. We've already approved, he's already, has the ability to enter into that agreement. It has to do with adding more money because at the time of budget, he didn't add that as an expense. But when you look at his budget, the budget has the capacity at this time. And so my recommendation is that if there's a budget issue, that he come back once the clerk can support the position because currently the evidence doesn't support a transfer of money from one fund to another, based on what you just heard from the clerk and the controller.
Just to have one clarification, only because I heard two budgets mentioned, I heard the assessor's budget mentioned. This has nothing to do with the assessor's budget. This has to do with the DMV budget for Priest River, and they're two separate things. I can't use money in the assessor's budget to pay for a porta potty.
Sorry, I identified you by title by saying assessor, not the budget.
Thank you.
So to be clear, I don't disagree. I'm just not in agreement with moving contingency.
Yeah, I see the point that it may not be necessary at this time. And so that's.
It may not. The DMV, for some reason, has three different budgets, as you know, because you sat there. I don't think there's much money at all in the Priest River, Priest River DMV budget. But most of it's in the Ponderay Office budget. So we'll see. And if, I'll keep the auditor aware of what our needs are. And if we need to transfer it, then we can do it later in the year.
So this would be for the DMV Priest River budget?
Yes.
Is where this is going to be coming from, not the assessor's, to be clear.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
It would, the service would be paid, be paid out of that budget.
And to the, to the auditor's point, once we pull money from Statutory Reserve and move it into that budget, we can't just pull it back again. So we have to plead at the reserve by that amount.
Right.
So I see the point that it is probably more prudent to wait and see if through the budget cycle of the fiscal year becomes necessary.
Right, and I have no problem if we look at it quarterly and piecemeal the funds into the Priest River budget, yeah.
We could quickly bring this resolution forward again if needed to pass that, to move those funds.
Okay.
And for contingency, you need all, everyone present must say yes on that one.
I think it's good to have this awareness. I think it's good to monitor it, make a decision if we see a budgetary shortfall on the horizon for that particular budget. Because I know it is a small one to your point.
So it would be your responsibility to keep an eye on the budget. And if it's running short, it would be your responsibility to bring that back to the board and ask for this then at that time. Because we may or may not remember this day, eight months from now. I've been wondering why the DMV budget is running short because it was not budgeted for this expense.
Right. And as an example, I know that we intentionally worked with each elected department head to build a contingency into each budget. But that budget being as small as it is, I'm confident the contingency doesn't cover it for that particular budget. Clerk Rosedale, did you have something?
Yeah, I'm taking this position because he was trying to steal one of my employees earlier today. No, I agree. No, no, I think, I think that's great. The go-ahead for him to do the project is great, and, and we'll keep an eye on that. And if there's any issues, we'll alert the assessor and the board.
Then we don't need this at this time.
So that's opinion, so we can choose to vote it down if we like to.
Okay.
Any additional deliberation?
So the board will just be approving of the fact that a porta potty is necessary and will be funded. It's just the manner of funding that's at question, is that correct?
Yeah, and I think we, our last special meeting that we got, I think, the board did decide that it was something that was necessary. We just didn't have the resolution at the time.
For the budget transfer? Yeah, so my understanding would be that you, not only do the board agree, but I believe you also have the budgetary authority to make that decision under $5,000. And that the board approval would only be necessary to move transfer funds from one budget to another on this item, if I'm understanding that correctly. So I don't think there's any actual approval needed by the board at this time unless there was going to be a change to the budget funding.
That, that was my clarification at the beginning of the way it's worded. It looks like you're asking us to approve the contract, which we don't need to do because it's less than the $5,000. It was just a transfer move, that was the question. So they're voting, so my position to vote this down doesn't impact you putting the porta potty there because that's within your authority as the assessor because you're over DMV.
So even though you have that authority, I will state publicly my full support to have an ADA accessible toilet available at the Priest River DMV location for the public's use.
Okay, on behalf of the bushes and trees surrounding the parking lot out there, I thank you.
I, I also think that it's worth looking at, is that a long-term option? Because I think that there's room for improvement at that particular location. And I know that it's been something discussed, but it hasn't come forward. And maybe it's an opportunity to look at a plan for that particular location.
Thanks for that segue. I am looking at a couple of things, the possibility of purchasing a used mobile home that can be converted to office space. There is a place out there with utilities where it could be installed. I'm also talking to steel structures for the building of a, a building out there that would be more, more modern, safer for employees and more convenient for our customers. And I'm also looking at a remodel of the existing facility to see if we can accommodate both a, an employee and a public bathroom in the same facility. So I will be coming to you later.
On behalf of the public, I will tell you, the other comment on that location is we would like to not stand outside with the restroom beeper.
Well, that's one of the things in remodeling. And a fourth thing I'm looking at is renting property out there. I did discover a thousand five hundred, a thousand twenty-five square foot commercial parcel for, I think, $1,000 a month that could be converted to that. My first, my first objective is to try and remodel existing facilities because we don't pay for that. Second one would be trying to rent and then renovate another facility closer to Priest River. It's only about a mile from where we are now. But I'll come to the board later with that.
All right, thank you. So with that, roll call vote, please. No.
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 Thank you, assessor. Human Resources.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jonathan Holmgren, Human Resources Director. Item before you for discussion and decision this morning is regarding Form 1095-C Outsource Services. Bonner County is required to issue Form 1095-C to its employees under the provisions of the Affordable Care Act. In previous years, Bonner County has outsourced this service to 1099 FIRE. And this outsourcing service has been included in the approved fiscal year '26 county budget. The Human Resources Department requests the Board of County Commissioners to approve the attached quote from 1095 FIRE for providing Form 1095-C outsourcing services and to sign the attached 2025 ACA Information Return Services Agreement. The quote includes Bonner County Emergency Medical Services EMS since they were Bonner County employees during tax year 2025. Please note that the exact cost of the mailing service is to be determined. We should know the total mailing service cost once 1095 FIRE processes Bonner County's personal records information. According to an email received from auditing on November 6, 2025, there are available funds for this service in the Human Resources Department budget. Auditing also recommends that the Bonner County Ambulance Service District, formerly known as Bonner County EMS, covers the cost for their portion of this contract service. Legal has reviewed the agreement and approves with the inclusion of the standard contract addendum. This addendum has been sent to 1099 FIRE, and they have communicated that they will sign it once Bonner County has agreed to proceed with contracting their services.
Any questions from the board?
So the question that I have is, why, why are we not carving out the ambulance service district? Is this something that they cannot do on our own? They need us.
For tax year 2026, because they are separate, they will be responsible for this for themselves. This is for this past year, tax year 2025, when they were still employees. But per auditing's recommendation, they can contribute financially for their portion. That was the recommendation from the cop controller.
Okay, so then next year, they will be doing their own?
Correct, they will be responsible for their, for themselves.
Yep, thank you.
Is Chief, did you have a conversation with Chief Lindsay? Because this is in part related to healthcare and they're looking at a potential change in January, which might impact something like this. I'm not seeing confirmation in this presentation of Chief Lindsay's comment on entering into the $700 agreement at, with this company, given the direction that is being looked at. Do you, do you have that? Am I missing something?
No, at this point, I just have the piece of information shared from the cop controller for auditing with the idea of how the ambulance service district would contribute to this. I believe that that is a logistical detailed discussion point we can figure out after the fact. The important thing to get the ball rolling is to get the invoice and contract before the commissioners because of the time and the amount of data that it takes. Last year, we, we were a little bit behind the ball with getting this done, so we're trying to start the process earlier. I would recommend that the language of the motion include the board directing Human Resources to work with auditing and the ambulance service district to implement any guidance the board has for how the board would like to see the division of the payment, if any. But I think that's up to the board, that's not a decision for me to make.
I don't understand why there wasn't a conversation with Chief Lindsay about this aspect of the line because the board would be entering into, and I don't see him online.
Because technically, my opinion to answer that question is technically, that's not necessary because we're covering tax year '25, and they were Bonner County employees, so they would fall under the umbrella. I was just presenting the feedback from the auditor's office of the idea of the ambulance service district contributing. That would be a discussion point for the board to decide on guidance for that and then direct Human Resources and auditing to move out in that direction. It's technically not required because for tax year '25, they were Bonner County employees, so it does fall under that big picture umbrella in the overall HR department budget. But it's merely presenting another idea, another option, so the board doesn't feel like you're being backed into a corner with only one course of action.
Well, this is a renewal going forward. This isn't, we're not backdating something. And so I understand you're saying that in the prior fiscal year because they were employees, but that doesn't remove the, having the conversation with the ambulance district. And I understand that this is being requested to be removed by, renewed by the 30th of this month. But I can't recall, and I, I did just get an email from Chief Lindsay about their insurance. I, so I, I don't have any further questions on this for HR.
If I can add a point of clarification, this is a external contract service that we've done year over year. It's not necessarily a renewal in the way I, I see it. And we're hoping moving forward that we actually have this capability internally with the Tyler Enterprise ERP system. We just need to receive training from Tyler to do that. So I do not envision this to continue as a year-over-year expenditure.
The current request is a renewal, correct?
This is a brand-new agreement and contract, so.
So why does it say? It says, November 30, 2025, early renewal discount is what this form says.
That's their organization's form, and that's how they choose to type that up in the language they use. If it was a renewal, in my opinion, it would be a, there wouldn't be a need for a new contract. But it's a new one year-over-year for the service they provide. They don't provide a contract for three to five years, and then you renew it. It's brand-new every year. Which we're hoping to save the taxpayer funds by moving away from this, by getting, training on how to do it ourselves with our internal systems.
Yeah, I think the language that 1099 FIRE chose to use is just confusing.
I agree, and I know there's been discussion with.
We've done it every single year, so we're just, if you get a new contract, because on some of issues with the board, because you don't overlap boards, you just get, it's a new contract with the same people, but it's the same thing, which is why they're calling it a renewal. And then if we were to do the exact same thing next year, it would be the same contract. So it is a renewal, and there's no other way to say it than we're just playing a word game right now. It's a renewal. We already use this service, they're asking to use it again. I, which is, it's just a, we're signing another contract in this fiscal year. So I don't, it is.
Commissioners?
Yes.
I just got off the phone with Jeff Lindsay, and he said that yes, ENF is comfortable paying their portion of the ACA fee if you so choose to do that.
Thank you for clarifying. Do they know their portion's like 1,500? 699, 50 plus postage. Okay, does the board have any additional questions? I don't. entertaining a motion?
Based on the information before us, I move to approve the attached quote for Form 1095-C Outsourcing Services provided by 1099 FIRE and direct HR to work with auditing and EMS Information Returns Services Agreement.
I'll second the motion.
Do we have any public comment on this agenda item? Or deliberation?
So for me, this is, this needs to have, in the future, EMS should have been contacted and their response to what we, what this request is, since it's inclusive of the ambulance district, should actually accompany this document as well. I'm going to accept Jessica's, and thank you, Jessica, for reaching out to Chief Lindsay about that line item because had he not, had we not had that response, I would, I wouldn't vote to bind their budget without understanding the direction when we're currently working. We need to have open dialogue with, when we're doing that, not just say we'll work on it after we vote. I do have a contract question for Nate. Typically, the person signs their document before we do, they sign those addendums before we actually, as the board, sign it. So is this, is it okay to do it in this direction where they say they'll sign it but not sign it to us?
That, yeah, this is Nate Adams from the Bonner County Prosecutor's Office. Yes, we've, we've got on, documented that they're in agreement with this addendum. And so they will probably just sign it at the same time that they're signing the finalized contract.
Okay.
So that should be fine.
Okay, thank you. And then I would, I would just add Chief Lindsay's response in terms of their budget committing to paying that into this after we make the vote. I did ask him to, I emailed him about this, to ask him to put in writing. But we need to have open dialogue when we're committing someone's budget or when that's, that's part of what the motion and recommendation is, which I agree that should come out of their budget.
Any additional board deliberation?
I don't have any.
I'll just say I agree, as much communication as we can have is helpful. We obviously want to coordinate to the best of our ability. I think this one for me is a little bit of a gray area, given that it's completion of historic information. But we weren't making a formal commitment with the way I understand the motion. But I do think that trying to have that dialogue in advance is helpful whenever we can. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
And Roden Bridge, the Director and the Assistant Director are unavailable. So I was asked to present this item for them. I was asked to present this item for them, so I will read the memo for the board's consideration. Bonner County Roden Bridge is requesting to renew two snow plowing contracts by Weekend Ho Excavation and John Pipkin. Weekend Ho Excavation has been plowing the Hope Peninsula for the last few years for a rate of $70 per hour. That calculates to an average of $4,000 per year. Their rate has not increased per hour for fiscal year 2526. John Pipkin has been plowing Glengarry Bay Road for a few years due to the narrow turnaround that was created, creating a safety issue for our equipment operators in their trucks. Last year's cost was under $2,000. John's rate has increased from $95 to $110 per hour for fiscal year 2526. Both contracts are valid from November 18, 2025, until March 31, 2026, or unless terminated by any party in writing. We will receive their insurance certificates listing Bonner County Roden Bridge as an additional insured per their contract. The contracts will be funded from line 002-8680 Snow Plowing, that has an unobligated balance of $10,000. The Roden Bridge Department did request quotes from three other companies, being Lippert Excavation, Bestway Tree Service, and Apex. We only received a response from one company, Lippert Excavation, and they did not have availability. Does the board have any questions that I may or may not be able to answer?
I have a question for you. Spotlight. You're not going to be able to answer it, I don't think. But I wish one of them were here. So the Glengarry Bay Road, I appreciate the explanation why we're contracting with someone else to plow our county roads, but that wasn't done for the Hope Peninsula. Why we're, why we can't do it, and I can only assume, but I don't like to do that.
Yeah, the only thing that, that the Director explained to me in advance was that from a access and efficiency perspective, things are a lot tighter, narrower in that area. There isn't the same lack of safety turnaround issue. I think it just has to do with narrow, narrow roads, size of our equipment, and the efficiency of being able to get into that area and out of that area. So they found this to be more cost-effective when they look at their overall services countywide, with the time it takes to be in there. Details beyond that, I can't speak to.
That's what I assumed.
Yeah, that was the overarching understanding, was one was a clear safety concern, and the other had to do with efficiency and effectiveness because of the conditions within that peninsula.
Okay.
Thank you, Andrew, I'm Road Director. Questions I may or may not be able to answer?
No.
All right. Entertain a motion, if you're willing.
I move that the Bonner County Commissioners approve the two snow plowing contracts for Weekend Ho Excavation and John Pipkin. For the winter of 2025, 2026, contracts will be funded from 002-8680 Snow Plowing.
Second.
Do we have any public comment on this agenda item? Or deliberation? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Nockley?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Bless you. On to airports. Mr. Shook?
My name is Commissioners Dave Shook with Airports. I'll try to get through this before my voice completely fails me. This record of negotiations for the engineering services proposed by our Dura is for the Priest River Airport Snow Removal Equipment Building Project. When engineering services are expected to exceed $100,000 for an FAA AIP-funded grant, the sponsor, us, is required to get an independent fee estimate from another engineering firm to ensure the proposed fees are fair and reasonable. We procured and received an independent fee estimate from Jacobs Incorporated on October 8, 2025. This estimate provided a fee proposal in the amount of $157,151 for the design and construction administration services of the project. Our Dura's fee proposal is $149,581.55 for the design and construction administration services for this project. This record of negotiations was sent to the FAA for concurrence on October 28. On October 31, FAA responded with informal concurrence pending this board's approval of this letter. Once you have approved this letter, the FAA will issue a formal notice of concurrence with the proposed fees. I recommend approving this record of negotiations.
Does the board have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
No. Director Shook, just to be sure, were, did you find any discrepancies or irregularities between the bids presented for professional services between the two contractors?
I did not. Generally, it had to do with, the hours were somewhat different in some of the categories, and some of the tasks, and the rates were somewhat different in some of the tasks. We have, we've used our Dura in the past for this type of work, and we find this to be accurate and acceptable. The reason it's over $100,000 is because we have to do some survey work and some geotech testing on that site to confirm that the foundations can be properly designed for the building.
Thank you. Entertain a motion.
Based on the information before us, I have moved that the county approve this record of negotiations and that the Chair sign administratively.
I second the motion.
Do we have any public comment on this agenda item? Or deliberation? Then. Roll call vote?
Mr. Nockley?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you, Director Shook. Hope you feel-
You too, thanks.
All right, B O C C Vehicles.
So I brought forward, um, we had, one of the things the board did was we put people on the mileage reimbursement form, where they turn in their request for mileage. And RISK has a lot that they document, and their last request for reimbursement exceeded actually what our stipend is, because of what, kind of even logistics, they're agreeable to actually doing the stipend versus putting in the reimbursement. I think our last, our last one was over $400 for vehicle reimbursement. So I'm bringing forward to the board to review that particular vehicle stipend for putting it back on, because they used to have the stipend, and then we went to the mileage form. So I'm asking that we take a look at that and see if it's reasonable and appropriate for the board to put the stipend back on.
Do we have a average monthly cost versus just a high month that we can look at versus the stipend value?
What they brought forward, it's showing that we're spending, this last one was for something, and it's not done as monthly. What's happening is, in some, they're not documenting every little thing that they're traveling for. When we got this one, I will say, some, I did give some feedback to RISK about reasonable and necessary travel versus can we cut down, you know, some of the, like, for example, Veronica brought forward a item where we picked up our cards in Coeur d'Alene, our vehicle insurance cards. Could that have been avoided? I did talk to RISK, and the reason they went to pick it up, they were in Sandpoint, they went to pick it up to distribute them, to address it in a more timely way. And so I did say there's room for some adjustment there. But with what he's traveling throughout the county for, there's understanding and recognition that because of the location of our insurance, that they're, they know that they can, they're appropriately adjusting when they're in Coeur d'Alene to grab things in Coeur d'Alene. But there's a lot of travel where sometimes the, let me write everything down, is more cumbersome. And so a review of just being fair and equitable is what is suggested. So it's over, I want to say it was 440, but we did go through the lines to see, was it all correct? And what was submitted was correct. I, I'll agree that for all vehicle stipends, you're going to get it where some travel is not even happening in that month, but part of what you're addressing is kind of the wear and tear on somebody's vehicle. So I'm bringing it forward to take a look at, because the person also, the person also wants to move from the managing. If we're not going to do that, then one of the things we should consider is, we talked about this, a car assigned for RISK to move throughout the county once they get here, but we haven't identified that. So I'm just bringing it forward, so we'll see what we see.
Questions?
I don't know if I have questions. I have some comments. We, I think we need some policies. Our policies on travel suck, to put it bluntly. The documentation part doesn't exist, because we don't have it presented to us. And I wish I would have had more time. I just received this memo minutes before the meeting started, so I didn't have any time to do any research on it. But, and I'm kind of surprised, coming from RISK itself, one of my main issues is the risk that's involved with county employees using their own vehicles to do county work. And then we have the risk of an accident. We have, there's tons of risk out there. And then who's going to end up paying for that? That person, that employee's going to have to be using their personal insurance, is the way I recall it, to be used for the accident. They're going to be responsible for whatever, maybe they don't even have collision on their vehicle, so they're now out of vehicle doing the county work. I really think we need to have a discussion or a workshop on motor pool. We need vehicles within the county for county employees to be doing this type of work. We need county vehicles for commissioners to be driving to Boise and not using their vehicles, and getting different amounts. I can drive to Boise this month, and I'll get reimbursed $400, and next month, I have to go for another meeting, the exact same place, and I'll get $250. It's, it's just all over the place. So I do think that before we even start to address this, that we need to address some other things. As far as travel policy, I would like to see policy written on, sorry, Jonathan, adding more to your docket. And I am not a policy person, but I do see the need for this. When does an employee have to do something on an official basis, such as Commissioner Williams was talking about earlier? Why are we picking something up in person if it can be mailed to us, or if we could pay a delivery service to bring it to us? So I think this is a lot larger issue than what I am prepared to, I don't even know how we can address it today. I appreciate bringing it forward. Now it's on the radar, and I think that's where it needs to be. I do think that we need to schedule something with RISK, with HR, maybe with department heads and electeds, and put our heads together with some kind of a policy that works for everybody, so that we can also minimize the risk and liability of the county, and limit the costs to the taxpayers.
So I want to, just before, did you see the emails about reimbursement from Christian to the board?
No.
Okay.
I'll be forward.
No, it's okay.
They must have come in-
It's, so I, I don't, we've identified from the beginning of hiring an HR director that we needed to address policies, that that was the primary function that we needed. On this one, I, I'm putting forward that we review this, and it's fine if the board says, just keep doing a mileage reimbursement form, and then they need to write everything down. But, and I think, and it's not an unreasonable ask to say, do more months of turning in a form to see what the average is. But then equally, we need to, this is one where it, in that particular function, they travel throughout the county. I can see doing it either way. I just need to bring it forward, because it is a, a task that takes away from other things. So I can, I wanted to bring it forward, so that this particular job function is on the radar. Just because we paid, I think it was 440 this month, that doesn't mean that that's going to be the rate every month. But that's what the stipend isn't just, so there's, you can go either way on it. I will say, from a risk perspective, some of what you're mentioning about insurance, and when you travel for the county in your own vehicle, isn't accurate in terms of what the person does and how you claim things. It actually does come back to the county. But what doesn't happen for the person, it's not in, it's not in the person's best interest to choose to drive their own vehicle, because it does not benefit them to do that. It's in, in cases where someone is actually traveling, the person that actually benefits from using the stipend versus a vehicle from the county is actually the county, because we're just saying, here's a fixed dollar amount. But if a person gets in a motor vehicle accident in their own vehicle, in the course and scope of working for you, you are going to be responsible for it as the employer. So they, they're going to get their workers' comp claim, then they're going to turn to our other lines of insurance to address the damages associated with their vehicle. Whereas, so there's greater risk in that regard. So that, but it's not that, it's, they may not have insurance driving their vehicle, and they're using that only. There's, they actually get to tag us. That's part of what we-
So I thought, and this could be a discussion for another day. I don't want to take up a lot of time at the business meeting, but I thought, I was under the understanding, when we had talked about things like this before, and litigation that was before us, and other people that were using their personal own vehicles, that they were the ones that had to cover their own deductible at all. And number two, some people, I mean, what if you're driving your, your, your personal own vehicle for county business, and whether you're getting a stipend or mileage, you run over a nail and you ruin a $200 or $300 tire? That is the risk that that person is taking, because the county is not going to pay for that tire, that you ran over something while you're doing county business. Is that correct?
That would come to risk. They would put a claim in like you see for windshield. So we can have the discussion on how insurance works at a different one, and this is fine to say, we don't want a motion, we just want to discuss the idea on this particular person. We just need to have it on our radar of, some people are spending more on their own. The ideal situation would be that they come to work, and we had a vehicle account, because in the risk area, and I brought this forward when we talked about budgets, this particular function sometimes will be on an accident scene, and having a Bonner County vehicle with the sticker is beneficial. It's just, we don't have that. And so we did pull back a vehicle that was a take-home vehicle from someone that we identified that didn't qualify for using that, and maybe we identify that as a risk vehicle to use. But we have to do something to address that, to include reducing the drive time.
We do. And I wouldn't necessarily support assigning it to RISK, because I believe the one that you're talking about is a motor pool vehicle, and should be available to any of the county employees that need to travel wherever. They could check that vehicle out and be, have that be covered by those same things. That's, and I'm just going to throw this little plug out right now. That's where, months ago, when we were discussing this, I supported the fact that I think the county needs two or three vehicles. They don't need to be new vehicles, but decent running vehicles, whether they purchase them or lease them, such as other electeds do within the county, for these things, for when commissioners have to travel to Boise, for when the clerks have to travel to Boise. There needs to be some vehicles that the county has that are made available for these people to use. I just don't think it's fair to ask the people to use their own vehicles to do stuff like that.
So I think, very important conversation, as you both have said, but I do think that we should have a very specific meeting for that purpose.
I do, too.
Because I think we're going a little bit broad from the agenda, even though it's related. So I would, I would recommend that a motion be made, if you'd like to do so.
I don't, I don't need to make a motion on it. I, it was action discussion regarding the stipend, and so if it sounds like we want to bring it in a different manner or wait time, I don't need to make a motion on it. We can just bring it back at a different time.
It's also my preference that we address it from a broader perspective, ultimately. And then personally, for me to make an individual decision like this, I would have to have more, more data points, more months of information to know whether or not financially, I think it's a good decision.
Okay.
And I would like to just solve the issue.
Okay.
And not just put Band-Aids on things.
So there's, there's no motion on the table, then?
No, it was action discussion.
Okay, just clarify, there's no motion on the table, so there's, with that, then, we will move on to the District One Commissioner update. Amy, so let me pull that up. Okay, first, I'd like to make people aware, this is a scam alert. We do have a number of scams going around- We do have a number of scams going around our community right now where fake invoices are being sent out. Claiming to be Bonner County Planning Department or some version of a planning department associated with our county. These are going out in a number of different forms and formats. And so there's no simple way to try to describe it because they're, they're getting creative with how they do it. So if anyone receives an invoice that is claiming to be related to Bonner County. Planning in any way, please call the planning department and get clarification before pursuing making any kind of a payment. We do not usually ask for payment in that method. And so you're, rest assured, it's probably not legitimate. And so we would like you to please contact the planning department and clarify whether or not there is an outstanding payment due. Associated with any type of a planning related permit. We don't want folks to fall for this scam. And thank you to the Daily B for helping to get this information out there to alert the public. Also want to make mention of the fact with the holiday season upon us, that there are a number of donation opportunities. So down in the main lobby of this administration building, you'll see that we have a giving tree. Where you can, any member of our staff or any member of the public can participate. They can take a card off the giving tree to help purchase gifts for a child in need in our community. There's also a box to take donation for Toys for Tots, as well as a box for non-perishable food items to be donated. And those items will be distributed to the food banks in our county, such as Clark Fort, Priest River and Sandpoint. So anyone who'd like to utilize these opportunities at the county building are welcome to do so. And my thanks to Veronica and staff who are helping to do all of the behind the scenes work to make this happen. I think it's a, it's a nice opportunity to do this in our community. Also, I've been asked about update on cell tower ordinance amendment. That is in progress. We are anticipating getting some first drafts. Hopefully here before the end of the year that we can review and offer feedback to as a county. And that we can continue to move that process forward. I've also had citizen contacts and a few other items, including the comprehensive plan map. If you have questions about how to interpret aspects of the proposed map or what's being considered, please feel free to contact me. I'm happy to help get that explained. Also, people who have contacted me who have received planning violation letters, just understand please that if you get such a letter. That is the planning department believes that there may be a violation associated with something on your property. It doesn't mean that it is in fact the case. That needs to be confirmed. So please contact them as the letter suggests and find out more and ultimately get clarity. You may be able to provide information that indicates that such a proposed violation is actually not. Or if there is one, how best to resolve that. If there is an actual violation, that can typically be resolved pretty simply. And then when it comes to public hearings, I've gotten some feedback, so I want to help clarify. When we hold a land use public hearing, which is a quasi judicial proceeding. We have procedural requirements that we have to follow. And so that includes very simply, we have a presentation by staff about the land use file. Whoever the applicant is, has an opportunity to present their information. We then take public comment. The public comment is for those who are in favor, neutral and opposed. The applicant then has a chance to offer a rebuttal to any comments or information that were presented. And then after that, we have closed public comment and we move into board deliberation so that the board can make a decision on that particular file. So procedurally, once public comment is closed. It's that, from that point forward, it's just the board deliberating to make a decision. What gets confusing, and I've gotten some comment on is if a file in a hearing gets continued, if we don't complete and make a decision at the initial hearing. And we continue it to another date and take that file back up. Then sometimes folks have been confused or frustrated because they want to know why they can't make public comment during the hearing. And it's because for that particular file, the public comment period has actually already been closed and we've moved into deliberation. So again, from a legal procedural perspective, we have to pick up where we left off and just continue down that path. If we don't do that, then we can actually have a procedural error and open the county up to litigation and being challenged. And so that would not be a good thing to do. So if you're wondering unsure about, it appears as if public comment hasn't been provided, please ask that question. Happy to help answer it and clarify it. But please understand with land use hearings, especially ones that are continued, can get a little confusing. There's other extenuating circumstances deciding whether or not in that particular hearing, the board chose to close the record. Or leave the record open for certain specific information. So there can be a lot of detail that goes into a hearing procedurally. And so sometimes we get clarification from our legal counsel at the opening of a hearing that's been continued to make sure that we're following things the correct way. So I just want to put all of that out there because it can get a little bit muddy. And I want folks to make sure that if they have a concern, if they think somehow public comment hasn't been properly addressed. Bring that up and happy to make sure that that gets answered because in no way or time are we ever looking to prevent or forego the public comment. But there are times when it's already been closed and it's not appropriate to reopen it. Okay. That was a lot, sorry. But I just wanted to be sure because that one gets a little complicated. With that, does anybody have any questions specific to the information that I provided?
Ann Wilder, Bonner County resident. On this telecom ordinance, you said that there would be workshops. Are there going to be workshops scheduled between now and the end of the year?
I don't anticipate. So we're just trying to get some initial draft information for our review as a board. And then once we have enough information that we're ready to hold a workshop, we'll get those scheduled. So we can go through that before moving into a hearing to adopt any proposed changes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions? All right, seeing none. District two.
I actually have a different opinion on the telecom workshop. Once the ordinance is given to the board. In 2026, I think we will be able to have some workshops so that we can get something adopted before the end of this year. Because we should expect to receive the ordinance, because that's part of one of the things that we're working on.
Could you clarify please, 2026?
Yeah, in 2000, or 2000, we're coming up on 2026. I think that we'll be able to get an ordinance done.
I just want to, I thought the question was before the end of this year, I thought was the question, to help workshops.
Yeah, I'm saying I think we can get a workshop done because I expect to get an ordinance done before the end of 26. And I think we should get the ordinance before then. So I think that we might be able to get a workshop completed before the end of the year. That, that, because I think the community, I think that's part of, I think, I think that we will be able to make that. At least one is my thought, based on my conversations. So on litigation update, we do have resolution of a case. And one of the things different that we're doing with risk is when we have things that resolve, we're going to work with legal to kind of give updates to the community. So you can see how we mitigated issues, how we, how the result of issues. And how kind of the decision process was made. I've received a lot of phone calls on the road down in Blanchard that is being addressed. And so where there is room for improvement. So I want to clarify, Bonner County Road and Bridge is not the one doing the work. There is a project that is in place that currently has a permit from the Idaho Department of Water Resources. So I'll do a shout out, thank you to Michelle for helping me field calls on that particular project. There are some concerns on how the road is being identified as a project, given the size of the equipment there. There are concerns being brought to my attention regarding the stream alteration and that there are fish in the stream. I D W R said that they did not get confirmation from the Army Corps of Engineers that that was a permit that was given. So the information I have thus far is I D W R did give their permit. We don't know the standing of the Army Corps of Engineer as a public, but that doesn't mean that the project didn't receive it. There is not a requirement that the two agencies actually talk together. And that might be some room for improvement because one side is managing the fish aspect of it. And another side manages the, can we make that road? There is a deadline of December 30th of this year to get through that project. And so if that doesn't happen, you'll have more hearings on that. I did, after a lot of the interactions, I'll call it, down there, reach out to the people doing the project. And asked if they were interested in kind of doing a public kind of discussion on the project itself. Because there are a lot of people with some environmental concerns with what's happening. That doesn't mean that what they're doing is wrong. It's just that it's not clear. Because when I D W R gave their response to us that went into the community. It did say that there's no confirmation from Army Corps of Engineers about the plan to do the stream adjustment. In Stone Ridge, it was always identified that if they created another entrance exit, that they were going to be able to grow. There is nothing down in planning, and this is my other update, because people asked, has the county received a growth request down there? We don't have anything right now. It's just them trying to address that. Members of the community have asked for conversations with what's happening. There is no requirement. So I would ask that we. I, I've asked that we actually do that, but there's not a requirement that, that they actually sit down and have that conversation because they did permits. But that doesn't mean they're not agreeable. So the owners are actually considering whether or not to have a productive meeting to explain what they're doing with that particular area. So there are people that are emailing the videos and the photographs of the road issue. Thank you for that. When Jason Top gets back and when Matt gets back, they'll look at that to see if there's a direction to give. Matt did give a response that said when they gave the stop order from the county, that, that wasn't something we should have done. And so the stop order was removed after it was replaced. So we're trying to figure out a little bit more information. Please be patient, but thank you for everybody that's reached out about that particular road. So on Friday, I did a mental health summit and it was, one of the things that Judge Mitchell discussed. And specifically pointed out was Bonner County is a good county to have a mental health court in. Currently, we send our people down to Cootney County, but with our growth and the impact of jails, it's worth considering. He does have an actual plan that he puts forward. I did speak with our prosecutor about that, especially with the benefits that they've seen with a mental health court. To help mitigate, the issue is going to be having the wraparound services that are necessary for a mental health court. I do have some information to give over to EMS for the grant opportunity for a paramedic. That goes out to address mental health issues to kind of help ease some of that strain. And so hopefully we can get a grant applied to do a trial of that in our community. And my hope is that we might get that done with, in the next few weeks. So I'll be talking to Chief Lindsay about that. So I am going to be leaving here at 11:30 to go to Spirit Lake. So I'll give a shout out and a thank you because I like to save our money. They have agreed to allow me to participate with a training that they're doing regarding crisis intervention in Cootney County. And to see if that's something that we would pilot here. So Benchmark is a company that actually is flying in to do a training for that particular police department. And so I get to participate with that to see how can we positively impact that from a county perspective and law enforcement. So I still am working on insurance risk and developing some systems in place. One of the big ones is to prevent leakage of our budget and leakage is something that I can avoid. It's actually a budget term. So if I can avoid spending money for litigation by a third party. That's me pulling back an opportunity to keep that in our budget. And so one of those key elements is using the statute in, that we have that says it's the prosecutor that identifies who can go outside of the prosecutor's office. We're trying to reduce third party attorneys, not just for the cost, but also the knowledge that you lose by having someone else work your cases. And so that's something that I, I completed a template and sent it over to the prosecutor's office. So that we have a process and a face sheet that justifies why we're sending tax dollars outside of the county versus utilizing a service that we've already paid for. So I did get to participate a little bit with, not a little bit, quite a bit with FIRE. I attended their meeting to kind of go over what their issues and concerns are, noting that the levy did fail in the district. One of the, Chief Armstrong did put forward quite a bit and asked me to participate with us in a kind of discussion about kind of the state of fire in North Idaho. I did do that and I actually gave a recommendation and Chief Armstrong actually had the same comment of asking. He's going to also ask other people in the community that have voiced opinions about FIRE to also participate in this third party. Kind of a grab of information so that we can understand the state of fire in Bonner County. We did also have a fundraiser where I'll give a shout out, even though she's not online. I'll say Diane and Dan Wellie, because they both stood up and made chicken wings at the Wing Fest for the FIRE fundraiser. And they won first prize. So congratulations to them. It only took them like eight hours of cooking, but they did a really good job. It was a very nice showing of support of the FIRE, men and women of the different districts. There was a lot of talk about what, what do you do in this particular area? Given the issues and concerns that are brought forth from both the community and the men and women that fight the fires. And making sure that they have the resources necessary to be safe while they're helping Bonner County residents and sometimes outside of Bonner County. So that's going to be a continuing conversation within the community. But it's something that Chief Armstrong is working on and putting together that list of people that should get contacted to kind of give their input. So we get a very good idea of the state of fire in Bonner County. I think that there's a, an opportunity also for us to do a discussion with the community about their budgets. So that it's very clear to the community as a whole as to what's being spent and where that money is going. Not just in kind of email conversations individually, but more of a, an open conversation. Because they have a lot of documentation to share with the community. So that it's very clear to the community as to the direction that we're going. There's a lot of different options. And just like with other issues, we want to make sure that we're supporting the men and women that are involved in FIRE. To ensure that they're not having to go out as one fireman on one truck without assistance from another person. We want to make sure that there's safety with respect to that. We don't want to have an issue that results in us saying, now we're going to focus on it. And so that's being focused on right now with recognition by the commission, FIRE commission, that there is a budget deficit. And they have ideas of how to fix that budget deficit. And part of that requires us to be open as a community to hear from them. So I'm going to close with Santa Claus, you may or may not know, is coming to Home Depot on December 6th. 500 Cootney County Cut Off Road from 9 to noon. You can take a picture with Santa Claus. He'll also come to Bonner County. But I told him that I would make sure I advertise that. He's coming on December 6th to Home Depot. And you get to make a holiday mug over there. So our Santa Claus that we know of really likes doing that. And so if you guys want to go out and support that, that would be fantastic. So. Any questions for me on what I reported out? All right, thank you.
District three.
Oh, sorry. He was slow on the raise of the hand. It was the one glove versus.
I'm a whole guy, you know, I'm a lot slower than I used to be. No. John Dupree, a resident of Bonner County. And I want to go on record thanking Asia for jumping on this road issue on Elk Blanchard Road. I live in Stone Ridge and the original issue came up because there were not flagmen out on the road. And they were blocking off parts of the road and we had some traffic issues. And of course, you know how scuttlebutt is and everybody gets upset and talks about stuff. Well, one of the people was actually on a walking trail, which is supposed to be used by everybody in Stone Ridge and accessing. Well, one of the residents there actually took some photographs of the workers out there. And apparently they didn't like it and they were throwing stones at him. And an issue occurred. But Asia, thank you for stepping in. It's so nice to have our government people helping the citizens. Merci beaucoup.
If you hang out, I'll tell you what the plan is after that for Stone Ridge. All right, thank you.
District three.
Thank you. So I attended the Sandpoint Bonner County Museum's open house last week. It was very well put together, very informative. If any of you did not make it, I would highly suggest going and checking out our Bonner County Historical Society and our museum. County Historical Society in our museum. It's kind of something that's tucked out of the way and it's not really up front and in your face unless you go and look for it. And if any of you have had a high school history teacher like I did that made it so boring that you really didn't care about it, it was really a great eye-opener, seeing the rich history of Bonner County, seeing the different Indian tribes that were here and lived here, and seeing how they did things. It was really a great time. I spent like an hour and a half there. I was really quite amazed. So anybody that's interested in our history, I would highly recommend going down there and checking that out. They're always looking for help and volunteer help, looking for donations. They're looking to do an add-on to their building so they have more room for their displays. So just wanted to give them a great little plug there. Also, I'd like to mention that our Bonner County Civil Defense and Resilience Team meetings that usually take place on the Fourth Friday of each month for preparedness trainings will not take place for the months of November and December since it falls on holiday dates. So that will continue starting in January.
Thank you. Okay, public.
Fred Arndt, I haven't moved yet.
Are you wanting us to move you? Because you say it every time.
Are you going to pay to have me move?
I'll talk to Jennifer.
I like the idea of the car thing. You might also want to consider volunteers in there coming up with some sort of policy. I know that there are circumstances where you have people doing volunteer work that are driving their own vehicles that are basically working for the county as an unpaid person. Just another idea.
Thank you. You let them get ahead of you.
I'm closer to the mic.
That was a tactical decision.
Wayne Martin, Bonner County resident. First off, it is great to see that the sitting group of commissioners are able to work together, have a friendly atmosphere as they go through these meetings. And that's evident by the lack of cameras being here filming the commissioners as they do their job and the reduced number of citizens that are here. Not that they don't care, but you folks are taking care of county business and taking care of us. Unfortunately, it only went in today, but I have a bit about EMS and FIRE. It'll be in with your stuff for tomorrow on what's going on in New York with the new mayor dealing with mental health plan and what it's going to mean for EMS and all. So it's eye-opening. I may have missed it, but is there a date for the Fair Board to come before the commissioners and talk about the 2025 Fair and how they did financially? If not, would like to know when that is going to be scheduled. I know there's others in the public that would like to know. I do know or understand that Technical is working on a policy for AI language, and if we could get an update on that at possibly the next meeting, that would be nice. With Asia's commenting about the fire service, it is recommended by National Fire Association for three personnel per apparatus for safety factors. And I know in many cases, that is not occurring. And then a question, Highway 95 in Duford, and I know that's a state highway, but there's a work crew that is out there this morning working, and it would be nice to have an idea as to what they are doing. It looks like they're on the plans of doing signals, but I don't know if that's true. But they are in the process of putting in potential mounts for them.
Thank you. And Commissioner Corn just pointed out to me, I'm looking at our calendar, this coming Monday, November 24th, at 10:00 AM, we do have a meeting with the Fair Board. Any additional public comment? Please step up to the microphone, state your name and residency for the record.
Good morning. My name is Mike Butig. I'm a resident of Spokane County, but I have a property at Schweitzer, and I have a home at Priest Lake. And I'd like to start by saying I've been coming to these meetings for years intermittently, and this is an awesome board and functional, and it's, we appreciate seeing that. My issues today are primarily related to what's going on at Priest Lake. We've got, a lot of it's past damage, but we've got a board in the past that did things like made it so that the county would give a building a location permit without any input from the local infrastructure, like the sewer board. And I, my property's in the Coolin Sewer Board. So Coolin would get requests for people to come in late, and the county would have already approved it. So the Coolin County or the Coolin Sewer District has, is oversubscribed. You guys probably are aware of that. So there are people that have paid in thousands of dollars for years that can't get in the system now because the county basically shoved them in and nobody was keeping track. About three, four years ago, once we went into moratorium, county changed the policy. But now there's 120 people that are very frustrated. The sewer district is facing, you know, millions of dollars in costs just to meet those commitments. Right now, what the county is also doing presently is it's allowing variances on water setbacks, on parcels that have deed restrictions. So if the deed restriction is 40 feet, I think you guys just did one a few weeks ago. You allowed somebody to be 30 feet within the zone, and I believe that same parcel hit a sewer line, spilled lots of water into the lake, and you basically completely rewarded that applicant for breaking all of those rules. It just, that lake is clean, it's pristine. We've also got a wetland that is under attack because of the, they want to subdivide it. You know, it's 90 feet deep of peat moss. It's not a good building site. Those lots were created in one second. They went, instead of doing a subdivision or a series of subdivisions with plat, they were able to just come in and create 60 new parcels or whatever it is. Well, the funny thing is the same person that was digging it, from what I understand, that hit the sewer line that you gave the variance to is now digging trenches across that wetland with excavators without Army Corps permission, no permits for that, from what I understand. And it's part of that same thing. There is going to be a permit before you, and this is kind of what I'm speaking of too. I recommend the denial of BLP 2025-1003 application for a 60 by 62 accessory building for property RP 59N04W098700A, Tricor Investments LLC, Clifford and Mort, dated 8/28/2025. It's within the Coolin Wetlands Complex South, Priest Lake, Idaho. We're calling for the denial of that because the structure is not in compliance with the basic definition of an accessory building, according to Bonner County. The structure is not in compliance with Bonner County Chapter 7 environmental standards. The structure is not in compliance with Bonner County Subchapter 4.5 design standards. The structure is not in compliance with Bonner County specific standards. The structure is not in compliance with Bonner County 11-112 and the examination of application issuance of building permit, location permit. It's in violation of that. The lot was created through an administrative loophole that was exploited by the property owner, and there's still a pending lawsuit that I'm a plaintiff in. So just, just asking you guys just to slow it down. You don't need to approve everything maybe and, and do a little more due diligence on these things. Appreciate it.
Do we have any additional public comment?
I'm going to give a public comment then. I forgot something. So some people asked me about the last few hearings that have happened where they're basically continued in deliberation, and I wasn't part of the first hearing and I only got in that deliberation phase. I have asked that we not continue for that reason, that one of the things the board can do is at the beginning of our hearing, say, there's only two commissioners here. Do you want to proceed with two? And you get the decision that comes out of two, not continue to three because we can't get work done that way. And you don't, you just have to have a quorum because there's some limitations that happen when you're not in the original hearing. So some people have reached out to me over, what are the rules when you come in in the section of deliberation with the board? So the board kind of recognizes that, so I don't think you're going to see that as much as you did in this last few time because I also want, I want to be part of the full hearing, and if I'm not part of the full hearing, I don't like that, just deliberating on a topic. But we're moving in a different direction moving forward. So that's the comment on people that reached out on that issue.
Any?
Can you explain that again?
I was only, on some of the planning hearings, they were continued in the phase of board deliberation.
And you were absent?
Correct.
You want to get.
Correct.
Okay, last opportunity. Any additional public comment? Seeing none, it is 10:55 AM. Oh, I'm sorry, we're going to recess. Thank you very much for catching me because we do have executive session. So it's 10:55, we're going to recess until 11 o'clock, at which time we will pick up the executive session.